Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, May 13th Issaquah City Council Committee Work Session. I want to thank everybody in the audience who's joined us this evening. Thank everybody at home. We have two items on the agenda this evening. We're starting with ID 0444, Pavement Management Program Overview, with Bennett Ashbaugh from the Public Works Operations Manager.
All right. Good evening. Thank you guys for having me. My name is Bennett Ashbaugh. I'm the Public Works Operations Manager for the Streets Division. I'm also responsible for the pavement management program. I am about to proceed with about a 30, 40-minute presentation on pavement, which is probably not the most exciting topic for everybody here, but I find it quite interesting. And I'm here to give an overview on the current pavement management program in the city of Issaquah. So first, we're going to go through a few definitions that are specific to this presentation. So pavement, the drivable asphalt surface of a roadway. Pavement Condition Index, or the PCI. That's a numerical rating of the pavement condition. The worst condition is zero, and the best condition is 100. It's how we rate our streets in the pavement management program. Useful life, service life. Basically, that's the length of time over which the pavement can be expected to perform its intended use. So the main function for the roadway is to convey vehicles in a safe, reliable manner. As soon as it's not able to do that anymore, the useful life is coming to an end. Life cycle, descriptive length of time from the beginning, middle, and end of a pavement's useful life. Lane mile, one lane of a roadway, one mile long. So you have one-mile-long roadway with four lanes. That's four-lane miles. Reactive maintenance, fix the worst first, in a simplified way to put that. Preventative maintenance, keep the good roads in good condition, utilizing routine maintenance. Deferred maintenance, postponing pavement maintenance to a future budget cycler when funds become available. So tonight, I'm going to be talking about these topics. I mean, talking about the intent of the pavement management program, how the pavement management program aligns with some aspects of the strategic plan. Congratulations on your guys' adoption of that. PCI in our city, how the pavement condition actually looks in the city, on the roadway today. What maintenance options we like to utilize in our pavement management program. And lifecycle management, basically, how can we maximize our investments with the pavement management program? And then we'll do a brief discussion on funding. Basically, how do we achieve the healthy balance of both reactive and preventative maintenance? So first, we're going to start with the city of Issaquah stats, a stat sheet, so to speak. So since 2000, there has been a 240% increase in population. 11,000 residents in 2000, 37,500 today. That's amazing. That's a significant growth for the city. It also increased our pavement, the square yards of pavements that we are responsible to maintain. In this case, it increased it by 700,000 square yards of pavement since 2000. That's essentially 100 lane miles of roadway. It's just a different way of looking at it, square yards versus lane miles. If we were to replace all of the city's streets with today's designs, with a whole bunch of assumptions and estimations, we'd be looking upwards of $500 million to replace that asset in today's money. So what happens with significant growth like that, with 240% growth? We have more residents. We have more developments that we need to support those residents. Those residents also require more businesses and more schools to support those families, right? With that, you get more inventory, but you also get higher traffic volumes on the streets. Heavy construction equipment, loaded trucks, you know, trucks that are loaded with 25 tons of material, plus. Trash trucks. Trash trucks are notoriously hard on the roadway system. They go on every single street, and residential roadways have a thinner asphalt design than arterial roadways because they're carrying less vehicles, less traffic, right? So they go into the residential streets, and they can tear up those streets. Public transit, you have more buses. Again, heavier vehicles, more vehicles on these roadways. It leads to more overall stress on the pavement system, the older streets, the newer streets, all the rest. So how does the pavement management program and the citywide strategic plan align? All right? So first, we're going to start with growth and development. Growth and development goal. Growth is proactively managed, planned, and communicated in a responsible way that retains our strong sense of community and livability. Well, strong sense of community and livability. And further in that goal area, there's the talk about neighborhoods retaining charm and character. Charm and character, to me, on a residential roadway with a cul-de-sac, kids are able to ride their bikes, they're able to longboard, you know, put basketball hoops out and play, not to mention the curb appeal of these homes. To maintain the character of the homes in these neighborhoods, you have the curb appeal. And if you have pavements that are falling apart and concrete that's falling apart, that takes away from that charm. Mobility. Getting around town is easier for people who live, work, and play here. The PMP can play its part in getting people around town with more ease. Essentially, every time a roadway is paved, it is a blank canvas in terms of channelization and striping. So I pave the roadway with a pavement management program. You can add, you're only constricted by the width of the roadway. You can narrow up lanes for traffic calming. You can widen bike lanes. You can look at buffered bike lanes on one side and shift the roadway over a little bit. You can add center reversibles on roadways where people are getting stuck in long lines of traffic trying to take a left. You can do all those things, which will in turn help the mobility goal area. Now you get to infrastructure. You could honestly put pavement right before infrastructure in both of these areas, and that is what we are doing with the pavement management program. We are planning and designing and building a well-maintained system to support our current and future needs. So there's a lot of different ways that the pavement management program ties into the strategic plan. The pavement management program in general, the intent is to extend the useful life of the city's pavement infrastructure by utilizing cost-effective preventative maintenance techniques. So essentially, this graph here, oops. This graph here represents the deterioration curve of a roadway. All right? So every roadway segment has its own unique curve or black line. The variables on how fast it deteriorates and all the rest, initial construction, weather, traffic loads, and the level of maintenance that you're putting on these roadways, that you're applying to these roadways. You see, it starts at 100 PCI. It starts at the top. It takes a quick dive into 85, all right? That's kind of like driving a new car off the lot. As soon as you drive it off, it's used, right? So that's effectively what happens with your pavement. But then, in that green area, it stays good for a vast majority of its life. It is maintained, it stays in good condition, and then it starts to dive. It starts to get fair, and then it starts to hit poor and very poor, and it starts to go down that path. As the pavement enters the fair condition, the yellow category, every failure that started in the good category, every crack, it all feeds on itself. The crack becomes a pothole, becomes a series of potholes, gets into the base, becomes rutting, becomes base failures. And that's why that curve happens so quickly down that path. So this is the standard PCI rating scale. I put grades next to it just for some people's minds and how they operate. So A, B, C, D, and F, good, satisfactory, fair, poor. And I'm not going to read every one of these distress attributes, but I want you to know that there's a lot of different things that are being judged for each individual road segment to get that PCI. Each one of these distresses has a weighted number, and they're all combined and give you the PCI of that road segment. So now, we're going to look at examples throughout the city of these conditions. I took these pictures about three weeks ago, so they're pretty current. So there's Mountainside Drive southwest and Front Street South, north of Second Ave. These are in good satisfactory condition. They have been paved. Mountainside Drive was paved in 2017. They're still in good condition. These are the roads that we want to keep in good condition. Move on to Highlands Drive. The north section of Highlands Drive is in the top two pictures, and the southern part is in the bottom two pictures. You notice the areas with crack seal, which highlights the cracking pattern that's occurring throughout the entire width of this roadway. So Highlands Drive is now in fair condition. It was built in 2003, about 15 years ago. So we're right to that, we're starting to get into the fair category and starting to have these failures, you know, expand, so to speak. West Sunset Way. You know, this is getting into the fact that they're road segments. It's not the roadway itself. It's not, West Sunset Way has this PCI. It is the segment. So west of Newport is in fair condition. It had maintenance on, it had crack seal maintenance on it. It's holding it together. East of Newport is in poor condition. Those are two different road segments, and they each have their own deterioration curve. Southeast 43rd Way. Again, we're back to segments. There are some sections of it that are poor. They're in poor conditions. There are some sections that are in very poor condition. There are some sections that are in fair condition. But throughout the roadway, this is a good example of those two conditions. Second Ave Southeast, very poor condition. This is on the 2019 PMP project list. This is where we're starting to have some base failures, some sub-base failures, that are starting to have the failures come from the ground up instead of top-down failures. South Cove, Southeast 43rd Place. This is in failed condition. This is also on the 2019 pavement management program. This is where you have base and sub-base failures that cannot be remedied by surface treatments by any, in any way. This is the street where trash trucks are going down it, and you can see the asphalt flexing with the base, right? So it needs significant, high-dollar maintenance repairs. South Cove 193rd Ave is in the same condition. It's also on the list for this year's pavement management program. It's important to note that we are talking about pavement. However, the pavement management program triggers concrete repairs as well. If the roadway has concrete curb and gutter, basically, you need to have a good border, a good surface to pave to to get the compaction on the edges, right? And also, the curb and gutter is your main stormwater conveyance system. It's taking the water from the roadway into the gutter and taking it to catch basins and away, right? So if I was to pave this picture up here, and the concrete remained in that condition, I am letting water infiltrate into the base at the get-go. I'm already increasing that deterioration curve from the get-go. On top of this, the pavement management program triggers concrete work in terms of pedestrian access ramps. So in 2012, there were ADA updates that tightened the tolerances on certain slopes of ramps. With maintenance projects, you are required to ensure that the ramps meet the new compliance. So as I pave a roadway, the roadway is going to get minor concrete repairs so the life of the roadway can extend, and it's also going to get new ramps with the program. Let's dig a little deeper into South Cove real quick. Yeah, you see the map. You see there's a lot of red and yellows and whatnot. It was a 2006 annexation. There is 100,000 square yards of pavement. That's roughly 1/20 of the pavement system, the city system. When we annex it, the average PCI was a 69. We have performed pavement management projects in this neighborhood. Those are some of the streets that are not highlighted on this map. But we didn't do a full neighborhood-wide pavement maintenance project, right? So the roadways that we did not perform that maintenance on are entering this fair, poor, very poor, failed condition. So right now, as we sit, approximately 25% of the neighborhood is in poor or failing condition. And there are other roadways that are on its way there that are fair, and so on. Now, it would be a mistake not to mention the fact that we have two large urban villages that have been built since 2000. We have Talis, that began development in 2002. Not every road was paved in 2002. We need to all understand that. Highlands Development began in 1998, 450,000 square yards. Between these two neighborhoods, you have a quarter of your city system at relatively the same age. They're going to enter that same point of maintenance needs, you know, within a 10-year span at the same time, right? Highlands Drive, as I showed earlier, is already in fair condition. You had all the construction traffic, all the heavy loads going up that road, and it is, where? It's worn faster than the rest of it. Talis, Talis Drive, it's starting to enter that condition as well. So maintenance treatments. What do we do? How do we maintain the roadways, right? So you have a reconstruction. A reconstruction essentially is putting new material in each one of those layers if it needs it. You may only get to the base course layer. You may get to the sub-course layer, depending on what you have there. That is why we're talking about high-dollar treatments in terms of reconstruction. You don't know what you're getting. You're opening it up. You're discovering what base failures there are, and then you have to mitigate all of that and then put a top lift on it. An overlay, still pretty pricey, you know, $25, $25, $28 a square yard. And you are either putting asphalt on top of the existing structure, if it's sound, or you're taking off maybe the top layer, the top lift. Think about Sunset last year. That was technically a profile mill overlay. Took off the old, put on the new, but we didn't get into the base. Didn't get into those aspects. Crack seal is maintenance 101. That is what you do to maintain your asphalt, to make it last longer. It's not beautiful, but it seals the cracks. It seals the cracks from letting water get through them, get through to the base, and it is maintenance 101. Now, the next piece, Cape Seal. Cape Seal is a low-cost treatment, and you'll see that it is a chip seal with a slurry seal on top. There are a lot of different connotations with chip seals, right? Bikers don't love them. Some neighborhoods don't love them, but they do provide structure. They do provide some level of structure on the roadway, right? A slurry seal is essentially a paint job. It's going to turn the road black. It's going to help in some oxidization. I think I pronounced that right. And whatnot. But eventually, in three, five years, all those cracks are going to come through exactly where they are, and you'll have to crack seal it again, right? Combined, you get structure, a smoother surface, and a pavement feel overall, like an asphalt overlay feel. And you can see, in this picture, it's a little grainy, but you can see the open gradation here, the rocks that everyone hates with a chip seal. And up here, you see the slurry seal on top. It's tight. It has a very tight surface. It acts like an asphalt roadway. And it's only $6 to $8 a square yard. So it's a quarter the cost of an overlay, and it buys you eight to 10 years. Not as much as an overlay, but it buys you more time. It's a pretty amazing treatment in the end. So we're going to explore with this moving forward in some areas. It's not right for every street. It has specific applications of where it's used and how it's used and all the rest, but it's an interesting aspect. So what can a fully funded PMP program accomplish in Issaquah? Basically, what we want to move from is, we want to move from less reactive maintenance to more preventative maintenance. And we want to maximize our city investments. So how do we do that? Public and private utility projects. This year, I'm working with PWE and their Capital Water Program as they replace water mains and services in South Cove. On 193rd Ave in particular, you may have seen in the picture there's a patched trench there. They are, every time a trench is put in a roadway, they're required to do a 10-foot-wide overlay on top to bring it back to its current or better condition than it started before they cut the trench, right? So in coordinating with them, they are providing that 10 feet wide by two inches of asphalt into my program, and we're able to put those funds together and pave the full roadway. These residents are not going to be left with a half a roadway paved and the other half in this failed, poor condition for another year or two until I get to it, until my program is able to get there. They're going to get a full project all at once, and that is how we can maximize the funding on projects for the utilities. Private development and frontage improvements. Nearly all developments need a frontage improvement, which requires half a lane, new concrete, half a lane, new asphalt, et cetera. Last year, or the year before, we worked with Dudley Smiles on 221st, just south of Taco Time. They were required to do a frontage improvement. They were required to overlay their roadway. Well, it's also on my list to pave for maintenance. We worked with them. They paid the contractor separately. We applied our funds, and our contractor did the whole road. Again, you have a full surface. You're not cutting into the roadway. You're not doing any of that. So again, those are different areas where we can work to maximize our funding and get more out of both programs. And then, I've already spoken to new channelization opportunities. There's a blank slate. When we pave the roadway, if we were to pave northwest of Mamish, there's a blank slate. If there are opportunities, PWE looks into those opportunities to make improvements on the mobility system in general. I have to re-stripe the road, whether it's in new design or how it was existing. So that's an opportunity. And then you have fewer maintenance needs. And as we talked about, sidewalk and ADA improvements are triggered by this work in general. So you're getting that improvement as well. So this graph shows what preventative maintenance can do, all right? This is in a simplified form, obviously, but you can see that standard black deterioration curve. You catch a maintenance treatment on this roadway when it's still in the good category, it's starting to enter the fair. You can jump that roadway back up in condition, not perfect, and then you're extending that. If you take that line all the way down, as it shows here, you can see how much more you're gaining in life expectancy. If you do these, and then you can keep doing them. You can keep doing the preventative maintenance treatments and keep extending this life out 60, 70 years if you maintain a good base structure. There's always those variables, right? But this is what we want to move mostly to do. Now, we already have our current condition on some roadways, as you saw in the beginning maps, right? There's our reactive maintenance aspect of this. There are some roads that are already in very poor or poor condition. Those roads are going to require the $6 to $8, and it's not actually per square yard, obviously, but $1 maintenance, six to eight times that for reactive maintenance, right? So that is something that we're still going to have to do. This is not what we want to do with every dollar of our program, you know? So funding levels currently. We have 2 million square yards of pavement inventory. Current funding is $954,000. With a little math, we get to a 70-year maintenance cycle. So theoretically, if I do a maintenance treatment on a roadway and I go and do something on every other roadway in the city, I won't be back to that roadway for 70 years at the current level, even if we followed inflation, you know, all the rest. I wouldn't be back to that roadway for 70 years theoretically. Obviously, arterials have bigger weight. They're carrying more loads. They're carrying more people, getting people places. So that changes depending on situations. So funding, maximizing our investments, all right? So basically, what we're trying to achieve here is we're trying to tip the balance from mostly reactive maintenance to mostly preventative maintenance. We'd like the ratio to look something like 75% preventative maintenance, 25% reactive maintenance. And to get there, we've come up with a number of $2 million to get there. And we understand the funding options available, and I think there's another presentation after this one to talk about more funding opportunities. But essentially, that is our goal in the pavement management program. And that wraps it up. You guys have any questions for me? Yes, sir.
Sure. So there's, it's 2 million square yards total?
Approximately, yeah.
Okay. And so if that's eight bucks a square yard, you said six to eight, that gets you 16 million bucks is what it takes. 2 million yards times $8 is 16 million dollars.
Correct.
So why, if you're investing a million dollars a year, doesn't it, don't you have everything covered every 16 years?
Because that is for Cape Seals only. The cost for overlays and reconstructions, reconstructions can run $45, $50 a square yard, and overlays run between 25 and 30 a square yard, depending if you're on an arterial, residential. It fluctuates based on the road class. So the average cost at our current time with our current treatments is roughly $34 a square yard for maintenance.
I see.
So that's six to eight. That's where we're trying to take advantage of those opportunities.
So where does the, in the picture that you showed, I was coming, I was doing six to eight because I was looking at your slide that showed preventative maintenance at a dollar per square yard, if you did it at 12 years or 14 years, and six to eight if you do it at, if you do it at, I don't know, 18 or something like that, right?
Yeah, sure.
But if it was, if it really was a dollar a square yard and you did it every 10 years, that's 2 million bucks over 10 years or 200,000 bucks a yard.
Yeah. So there was a mistake there. It shouldn't have been per square yard, but everything else in my presentation said per square yard. It's just the ratio of a dollar here would cost you six to eight here, just ratio-wise.
Okay. That's what, that's, okay.
Yeah. That's what I noticed when I was presenting. So it's the best time to find out.
Now, I understand.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. So you can just straighten them out?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that I think part of the calculus, too, is as we might transition to that 75-25 split between more preventative maintenance and reactive maintenance, we still will have roads that will require that higher-cost treatment in order to get them to a place where we can do more preventative maintenance rather than, say, full-depth reconstruction. I also wanted to add, just for those of you that are budget followers, that in 2014, we were putting roughly $390,000 into the blacktop, the pavement program. That didn't include perhaps some allocations to ramps and concrete work and some other facilities. And over the course of the next couple of years, we added budget, and that kind of plateaued in about 2016 at $950,000 to close to $1 million where we are today.
Thank you. Other questions from staff? Councilmember Hunt. Questions from council, not from staff.
Thanks. Does the $2 million estimate include the other things that are triggered by the pavement improvement? So you mentioned the ramps and the concrete. by the pavement improvement? So, you mentioned the ramps and the concrete, and I think some other things.
No. The ramps are currently being performed by the Complete Streets budget. We wanted to maximize, there is a game there between maximizing the amount of money we can put into pavements and Complete Streets updating the transportation system in general.
City Administrator, move.
Thank you. One thing that I'd just like to add to Bennett's answer there is, one of the ways that we have extended our pavement management program dollar over the last few years, I talked about how we had plateaued at that 950, $1 million range, is we have more deliberately utilized funds in other capital improvement programs to perform the ADA ramp improvements, to put towards some concrete repairs, et cetera. And so, we made a choice over the last few years to dedicate the pavement management program dollars to this type of work and not have larger chunks of it being siphoned off to take care of our requirements on the ADA ramps, for example. At one point, we were trying to do both, and it just became unfeasible for us to do that. So, now, we've largely converted the Complete Streets program to just ADA ramp improvements that coincide with the projects that we're doing on the pavement management program.
Okay. Thank you for that. I guess, from my perspective, it would be also helpful to know what, because if we increase the rate of the road improvements, then that will increase the rate at which we will have to make these other improvements, which will affect the budget, but in a different part of the budget. So, that would be helpful to know just as we factor in bigger picture budgeting. And then, I did have a question, a specific question about the Cape Seal. So, is this something that we are doing currently and would be doing potentially at a different rate to extend the life of some roads?
I believe that it was done in the past. It has not been done in the last X amount of years, the last few years. So, it's something that I would like to bring forward based on our current funding levels in certain applications. So, it's something that we would move to do more of.
And then, how often are the roads assessed, the condition of roads assessed?
Every 2 years. And this year in particular, we are essentially going to bring in a new company and get a new baseline using the system that I presented earlier with the PCI and the distress attributes.
Okay. And I had a last question about communication with neighborhoods and about how that is communicated, because this is something that affects people directly. They notice when there's crews working on the street right in front of their houses. And I think sometimes there's questions about why certain things are happening in one street and then the street over, it's something different. So, I wondered about that communication.
We have a very extensive communication policy, not only internally with the communications group, but we also brought some other things forward. Last year, I don't know if you saw, we had the word-on-the-street signs, big blue signs that had flyers in it trying to describe what we were doing, when we were doing it, where you can park, if you have questions to call. And we put those up in the neighborhoods. It works really well in the neighborhoods with pedestrian traffic on the corners. And I've had great success with it in the past, and it seems to be working out here. And we also are updating the website this year, which will be able to really help with things, so.
I have a question. So, and this is, this is sort of informed by my personal experience. So, I live on Idlewood, and Idlewood was in beautiful pristine shape. And then they did a water project, right? And then Idlewood was no longer in beautiful pristine shape. And they brought it back up to something.
Yep.
And that, something's better than nothing. But what do they bring it up to when they do projects? And what costs are there out there that aren't just the natural decay of the road surface, but do we handle costs, like when we do projects, it wasn't brought, it wasn't brought, I'm having trouble this evening. It was not brought back up to 100%, right? It was brought back up to an okay.
It is very hard to bring any road back up to 100% without...
You could have repaved it.
Yeah. Well, there you go.
It would be great.
It would have been great. Basically, they have design standards that they, that 10 feet. Right now, that is our standard, and that is for those reasons. So, it's hard to answer that question in terms of utility cuts and utility projects, but they are required to perform an overlay after. I believe that's been our standard for quite a while. And that's kind of, the purpose, a fully funded, you know, active program, if we can coordinate these water projects, like South Cove, you do the water line, you do all the work underneath, and then I put a nice top on it, right? And then, we're done in there until the next surface treatment has to happen. The water, utilities, and all of the rest should be lasting longer than my pavement, I hope, right? So, that's how we want it all to work. Doesn't always work that way, right?
Excellent. Councilmember Ray, you look poised.
I am. I have a couple of questions. So, you were indicating that you were targeting a 75-25 split between reactive and preventative maintenance. What's the current split right now between those two?
We are heavily in the reactive mode.
So, would it be fair to say we have some deferred maintenance also?
That would be very fair to say currently.
Do you estimate, you know, in really rough numbers, what that looks like right now?
Oh, man. Yeah, I can definitely get back to you on that.
That'd be great.
One shift in this year's program, you may have seen the program come through a little under our overall budget. I'm working on getting a crack seal company to come in and try to keep some of these good roads good. So, we're trying to make that shift towards preventative maintenance in the crack seal land. And then, we'll hopefully make some more shifts using the Cape Seal with the crack seal and slowly shift regardless of the budget a little bit.
Are there some factors that contribute to roadway wear that are notable?
Yeah.
Top 5?
Increased loads. I mean, it's all about loads and stress. Weathering, you know, you get a freeze-thaw cycle like we got this February. Everything was looking really good in January. I thought we'd make it through the season pretty good. Freeze-thaw cycles very much impacted base issues where you're getting water into the base. And construction, how is it constructed? There are some overlays that didn't have enough glue in between the top lift and the bottom lift, right? And so, it kind of sheds a little bit. But the bottom lift is in good condition. So, those are candidates for overlays and not reconstructs.
Last question. Do you have some kind of models you can predict where you're going to need to do maintenance and when?
I do. That is coming with this new scan, and we're starting a new baseline. We had some past scans, and they added in a few other distress attributes that changed the, it didn't keep our PCI consistent on a rating scale. So, we're bringing in a new company, new process, and we're going to get a baseline. And I can, I'll be able to present that to you guys with all the graphs and all the fun stuff.
All right. We'll look forward to that.
Okay.
Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you. So, is there a PCI that we target?
That is something that we are going to develop.
Okay. Are there other cities around the area that have PCI targets? Is there anything that we can use as a model?
That's a scary thing to venture into here, but a lot of cities are, they try to shoot for 75, mid-range for a realistic view, 75 to 80. You know, when you're at 80, you're back in the good condition. You're in the green box, which feels good. You're in a good condition. But realistically, depending on how well they were funded and how proactive they were leading up to that point, 75 is decent condition. But it's also about what our residents expect and what we expect. So, that's something that we need to define after we get this new data and are able to analyze all of that.
You said that with utility cuts and other projects, we have a standard of 10 feet required. Is that something that is our city in specific statewide?
Every city has a different standard. That is our city specific, which is based on other cities and other needs. But we're actually doing, I think we were doing standard detail updates recently, and we're reviewing other cities and what their policies are. But 10 feet is, it's a generous amount compared to some cities.
And when we're looking at establishing a PCI kind of goal, do we have a sense of, like, it would be different for different neighborhoods depending on how old the streets are, or different for a neighborhood versus an arterial?
The PCI number in general is a citywide number. It's an average of all the road segments in your system, because different roadways have different designs, and they're meant for different things, and they have, you know, it would be impossible, it wouldn't be impossible. I'm sure there's a way to make assumptions and come up with that. However, we also want to treat every resident the same way, you know? Every resident has the same wants in terms of their goals, you know? If arterials are falling apart and we're in making a neighborhood brand-new with 15 inches of asphalt, we'll probably put more focus on arterials for a little bit. I mean, that's our main conveyance of traffic. So, little things like that. But no, not neighborhood-specific.
Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you. Bennett, thanks for the presentation. Couple of questions about chip seal and cap seal. The $2 million number, are you, did, I don't believe, or tell me if I understood you correctly, whether or not that is forecasting increased use in those, either of those techniques to extend the life?
Just back up a second. To be clear, we're not proposing to do chip seals, just CAPE.
I meant to say CAPE. I'm sorry.
Okay. No, you're fine. I just didn't want that to go through here. But the $2 million is a great, it's a great starting point. Yes, if you apply CAPE seals at a lesser treatment, you can gather, your PCI can get better faster. I don't know how else to say that. But it can improve quicker. And so, if we're applying these CAPE seal treatments at a lesser cost, we can cover more lane miles of roadway a year, and we can bring the current conditions such as a South Cove neighborhood, or maintain Highlands-Tallis neighborhoods to, that keep them good. So, I don't have a specific answer for you in terms of if we only did overlays, it's this. If we only did Capes, it's this.
So, the, so, it sounds like, but this is a strategy you want to look into.
Correct.
And, and, okay. And so, we have not been doing, especially, we have not been doing the CAPE seal very much. I know we've been doing crack seals.
Definitely crack seals.
And, okay. And just a question, when that slurry is applied, what's the impact on the use of the roadway?
It depends greatly on the weather, but it is, at the most, 24 hours, no vehicles on the roadway.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Lot of different, I've done it in a lot of different residential roadways. There's a lot of ways to be successful in terms of getting people to their houses and all the rest that we would also be pursuing.
Other questions right now? Deputy Council President Batiste?
Just trying to better understand. Thank you for the presentation tonight. And just trying to better understand the sort of emergence of the CAPE seals. Is this sort of a new best practice that other cities are implementing as well and seeing that that's a better pathway?
Yes. It's not a new treatment overall. It has existed. There, some people have a hard time getting past the fact that there's a chip seal involved in it, because the road will be chip sealed for, you know, 3, 4, 5 days while it sheds and while you're able to, before you can put the slurry on it. So, some people, without proper notification, without proper information and communication out to the public, they try to nix it right of way. Where I came from, we did $2 million of CAPE seals a year. We did a lot of them. It was a big program. And it really increased our PCI drastically, quickly. So, I don't know, I don't know how old it is, you know, whatever, but it's definitely a viable option. It's a proven option.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right. Well, thank you very much. It was a very, very good presentation. You know, having been on council for a few years, I've heard this variance of this presentation a few times. I think this was probably the best one. So, thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Before we move on to the next topic, I will, I like to offer during council committee work sessions, the opportunity for the public to speak on an issue. So, we do have 2 issues in front of us this evening. We're going to talk next about the Transportation Capital Project Funding Plan, and I will also, after that presentation, ask if any of the public would like to speak to us. So, I will ask now if anyone from the public wishes to provide public comment in regards to pavement management program overview. If you would, you're welcome to come to the microphone, and if not, we will move on. Seeing no one moving towards the microphone, we will move on. Thank you very much. Next, we have ID 0419 Transportation Capital Project Funding Plan with our own Beth Goldberg, Finance Director, ably assisted by Sheldon Lynn, our Public Works Engineering Director. Beth, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm going to just take a moment to get the presentation Okay. Thank you. So, I am here this evening to follow up with all of you on a presentation that Sheldon and I gave at the March 4th council meeting on the unfunded transportation capital priorities. At that meeting, council asked staff to come back and follow up on a few topics that we are going to discuss here tonight, the first of which is a revised sales tax forecast, and then some revised financing scenarios based on those revised sales tax forecasts. And as part of that discussion, I am going to go into some more details about some strategies for managing a volatile revenue stream. When we, when I spoke with you on March 4th, raised that as a concern. So, I want to talk up through some strategies for managing to that volatility. Want to talk through some options for how to time and sequence the projects, offer you some recommendations from the administration's perspective on next steps as council considers these proposals. And then, we'll have time at the end for you all to ask questions and also to engage in a discussion about what I am presenting. Before I...
I'm sorry. Before you move on, I just want to clarify. I want to make sure I understand. It's my understanding that sort of in the, well, I guess this is, we're reading to this slide. So, you're going to ask some questions sort of rhetorically at the beginning to sort of say, these are the questions that we have in front of us. We're going to talk, you're going to talk informationally. We may have informational questions as that conversation goes through. And then, we will shift to saying, okay, now we want to have a little bit more deliberative conversation. Let's revisit these questions. And then, we may have comments or questions that are sort of more deliberative.
Correct. And I wanted to pose these questions at the outset to suggest some things that you might want to be thinking about as I go through the materials. I'll also say at the outset that you have very detailed memos in your packet. So, I'm going to keep this at a high level. There's a lot more detail in the memo. If I'm not going at a level that's deep enough where you certainly feel free to ask, but I'm going to keep this at the highlights. So, the questions that we'd like you to keep in mind is, I'm going through this presentation, and then as you deliberate at the end, is first and foremost, is council interested in proposing 0.2% sales tax increase to support transportation projects? And if so, which projects or activities reflect the council's priorities as you decide where to allocate what will be an increased funding source, but nonetheless still a finite resource? And then, we'd also like you to consider and seek your input generally on timing of a ballot measure. And that doesn't have to be necessarily decided tonight, but that is something to think about as we think about next steps. And then, last, and we talked about this concept on March 4th, is the concept of existing debt service capacity within the general fund. We'd like you to think about and offer input on how much of that existing debt service, existing debt service capacity you want allocated to the transportation projects, and how much you would like to preserve for other capital priorities that are facing the city. So, just to get everyone oriented, want to remind you the highlights of what So, just to get everyone oriented, want to remind you the highlights of what we presented on March 4th. And this slide here shows a summary of the seven projects that are the central point of this unfunded transportation capital list. As we discussed last time, in order to reduce the scope of the costs in alignment with the resources that we thought were available at the time, we narrowed the costs of two of the seven projects, the Newport Way costs, to fund them through the right-of-way acquisition phase, deferring the construction costs. Doing this narrowed the scope of the costs of the projects to $38.8 million. So, that's sort of the central point or the central dollar figure that we're looking at as we consider these various options. One last thing, again, to just remind you where we left things on March 4th, this was the mix of revenues that we were looking at. The council, based on the ad hoc committee's recommendation, said, okay, let's allocate 14 million of existing debt service capacity. There was 21 million anticipated available. Let's designate 14 million to the transportation priorities, leaving roughly 7 million for parks projects. And then, at the time, we were using a sales tax forecast that was intentionally conservative, and it was developed last fall when there were signs that maybe we were going to be seeing weakness in sales tax. So, we took a deliberately conservative perspective. So, we're anticipating $26 million of sales tax revenues, estimating 2 million to start with, and we did not factor in any growth factor. So, council, understandably so, said, come back, take another look at that sales tax forecast, come back to us, and let's see what kind of flexibility we have. So, this is where we left it on March 4th. So, since then, we have been looking at sales tax, and the first thing that we looked at is the 2018 year-end results. And one of the things that's important for me, I think, to point out with regards to the sales tax is there's actually a two-month lag from when we hear from the state how much sales tax revenue we've collected for a particular month. So, for example, we did not get the December sales tax collections until the end of February. That being said, the results for 2018 were very strong. We ended 2018 with $16.3 million worth of sales tax revenues. This is up 11.2% from 2017 and 7.3% above what was anticipated in the 2018 adopted budget. This is fantastic news, but being the finance person that I am, I always have to temper good news with a little bit of bad news or maybe not get too excited about it. For the first two months of 2019, we are seeing weakness in our sales tax revenues. January's sales tax revenues were 10.7% lower than the previous Januaries, and February is 1.86% lower. So, we are seeing some weakness. Now, does that make a trend? Not necessarily, but it does underscore the volatility of sales tax as a revenue source. Nonetheless, what we decided to do for forecasting purposes for this presentation is to take the 2018 results and say, okay, what would have happened? How much revenue would we have collected had we had the 0.2% sales tax in place in 2018? Had that been in place, we would have collected $3.6 million. I should also quickly point out a little bit of a nuance here. The sales tax totals that are depicted in the table at the bottom here are for what's broadly called retail sales and use, which includes retail, it also includes food establishments, it also includes construction, various service industries. And then we have two other categories that are considered sales tax, and that's sales tax on brokered natural gas and a category called criminal justice sales tax. It's an allocation we get from the state to help with criminal justice costs. The TBD, the Transportation Benefit District Sales Tax, just applies to that retail sales and use category. So, it's, you can't apply it to these bottom-line numbers, it's a subset. Nonetheless, the subset is a majority of our revenues. So, with that background in mind and underscoring something that I said on March 4th, and I've said again here and probably will repeat it a couple more times before the night is up, sales tax is a highly volatile revenue source. And to underscore the volatility in this revenue source, I've got a table here that looks at Issaquah's gross taxable sales, and so this is the base upon which that retail sales and use is built upon, our gross taxable retail sales 2007 through 2018, basically Great Recession to the present, to look at what patterns we saw. And what you will see from this chart is in the two years following the start of the Great Recession, our sales, our taxable retail sales, I should say, were down 30% in a two-year period, so a pretty significant drop. And then, in five of the 11 years since the Great Recession, we've actually seen declines in our sales tax revenues. So, again, underscoring the volatility, underscoring the depth of the Great Recession, and no one's necessarily predicting that we are going to repeat the Great Recession, hoping we don't repeat the Great Recession, but just as a benchmark of how bad it could get, the drop post-Great Recession was so significant that it wasn't until 2018 that we, I'm sorry, 2015, that we returned to the pre-Great Recession level. So, again, underscoring the volatility. So, that's probably about 10 times that I've said that tonight. So, one other thing I want to point out, because this is going to become important as I get to subsequent parts of this presentation, if you take an average annual change, and this, of course, ignores, you know, the spikes and the valleys, but if you looked at this period of time, our sales, our taxable retail sales grew at an average of 3.1% over this period of time. That data point's going to become important in just one moment. So, we looked at a number of forecasting scenarios to look at what would happen at that $3.6 million of TBD sales tax we could have collected in 2018, how that might grow over a 20-year period of time, which is what we're talking about for financing these projects. The first scenario is what we're calling an optimistic scenario, and that would take that 3.1% average annual growth rate that I just spoke about and extend that over the 20 years that we would be contemplating taking on the debt for these projects. It's important for me to point out that this scenario, we're not making any assumptions on the timing, length, or depth of a contraction or economic contractions that might happen over this period. So, this is just a flat growth rate, and we're calling this the optimistic scenario. We then looked at what we're calling a conservative scenario, and rather than growing the sales tax at an average rate of 3.1% from year to year, we grew it at a more modest 1% from year to year. Again, like the optimistic scenario, we're not making any assumptions about depth, timing, length of an economic contraction. And then, for a third scenario, we're calling this the stress test scenario, and we're basically saying, what would happen if we had another Great Recession at the outset of the sales tax, the implementation of the 0.0% sales tax? What kind of drop would we expect in this, or how much would that contract or compress the sales tax revenue? So, we're looking at that. Originally, we're calling this a worst-case scenario, but you will see in the out-years, because we're applying the more, or the 1% beyond the Great Recession years, we actually end up better with this one. So, I don't want people to think this is a worst-case scenario, I want people to think about, okay, what would happen, what kinds of drops could we expect in a year with our annual revenue collections? So, I'm going to show you a chart in a moment that documents these trends, but before we do that, I do want to point out that the administration is recommending that we use the conservative forecast scenario for planning purposes while being mindful of the dips that we might see if there is a contraction in the economy. So, this chart here models out the revenue trends. So, we're contemplating financing the projects using 20-year bonds, but depending on when this is put on the ballot, if this is put on in a November ballot, we actually wouldn't start collecting the revenues until January, I'm sorry, June of the following year. So, you would have the revenue in place for six months of the first year and six months of the last year, which means that this is actually spanning 21 years, and it also explains the spike at the front end and the drop in the back end because those are representing six months' worth of data. So, the yellow line is the conservative revenue forecast. The green line is showing what would happen to the revenues if we were to repeat the Great Recession. So, you'll see that it really drops off. And then, in year 12, because we're ending on a high note with that, the end of the 11th year following the Great Recession, meaning 2018, was a really good year. So, we're ending on a high note and then growing from there, the revenues actually come in higher in that modeling forecast. And then, of course, the optimistic scenario is bringing in even more revenue. Sticking with the conservative scenario that the administration is recommending, we could expect to collect $79.2 million worth of revenues over the 20 years of the sales tax So, now I want to talk about our thoughts, the administration's thoughts, on how to manage the volatility of this revenue source. But before I do that, I do know that there have been some questions about, well, with these more robust sales tax revenues, could we afford to embark on the construction costs for one or both of the Newport projects? And unfortunately, I'm here to say, there is not enough revenue to do that. And so, again, to, just to ground you in some data, the conservative scenario would bring in an average of $3.8 million of revenue per year. The average annual debt service on the construction portion of the Newport project, 54th to our state route 900, would be 3.7 million. So, you'd basically need another doubling of the increment of the sales tax to afford that. The Maple to Sunset segment is a little bit lower at 2.62. So, basically, there is not enough, while these revenues are more robust, it is not, they're not sufficient enough to allow us to embark upon the construction costs of the two Newport projects. So, what does that mean? What that means and what the administration is recommending is that we stick with the original seven projects that we talked about at $38.8 million, and then designating, and this would be part of the ballot language if council chose to go down this path, then designating any revenues that are in excess of what is needed to pay for the debt service for those $38 million worth of projects to transportation O&M uses. And that is where it ties into the presentation that you just heard from Bennett, that the funds, these revenues could be used and leveraged to help support the pavement management program. So, that's kind of a nice juxtaposition of ongoing capital needs plus ongoing O&M, and it gives some flexibility that if there is a worst-case scenario, another Great Recession, and the revenues come in lower, that's a flex point that the council could adjust depending on the flow of the revenues. So, I wanted to quickly, before moving on to the next slide, give you an example of how this played out with the City of Shoreline. So, the City of Shoreline ran a successful TBD sales tax initiative on the ballot last November. It passed, I believe, with 52% of the votes. It was designated for their sidewalk program. When they built their package, they only designated 60% of the anticipated revenues to named projects, named sidewalk projects. And they left the balance of the funds that they're anticipating coming in to be used for O&M on sidewalks or other capital projects that the council would decide upon at, as part of the annual budget process, based on actual revenues collected rather than a forecast. So, that's an example that we have looked to of how to manage the volatility of the sales tax, still meet the intent, which is a set of projects, but also meet other real impressing needs for the city in the area of transportation, such as the pavement management program. Okay, so now I want to talk about, and this, there's a lot of detail on this slide, but I'm going to synthesize it. We developed two options in terms of how to sequence the various projects, and there are trade-offs with these that I will talk through. But the first option for sequencing the projects is what we are calling preserving existing debt capacity. And I should actually pause here and say, I'm not going to go into the specifics of each project. If you have questions, Sheldon is here to answer them, and there's more information in your packets. But under option one, preserving existing debt capacity, under this scenario, and all of these are based on an assumption, although this has not been decided by the council, but this would go on the ballot November 2020. That is subject to council decision, but for planning purposes, that's what we assume, which would mean we would not start collecting or receiving the revenue until June of 2021. So, under the preserving existing debt capacity, we would basically say that all capital projects that would start in 2021 or later would rely on the TBD sales tax as the revenue source, and the projects that needed to start in 2020 would rely on existing debt service capacity. So, doing that, and because we're anticipating more sales tax revenue than we had anticipated at the March 4th presentation, we would put $35.4 million of the total costs on the TBD sales tax and rely on 3.4 of existing debt service capacity to fund those needs in 2020. The second option is what we're calling accelerating Southeast 43rd, also known as Providence Point. And under this option, the city would actually start work on Providence Point in 2020, construction in 2020. So, that would require the use of existing debt service capacity in order to fund that project. So, what that results in at the bottom here is, in blue, existing debt service capacity would be $11.6 million, and then 27.2% of the cost would be funded on the sales tax. Under both of these scenarios, there would be more debt service capacity than what we'd contemplated on March 4th, available to the council to decide to allocate for other capital projects, and I'll go into more detail on that in a moment. So, is, council considers the pros and cons, the trade-offs of the funding options. We are offering details on, or we would suggest that the council consider, how do the debt service costs under these scenarios compare to the sales tax stream that we're anticipating? How much sales tax might be available after paying the debt service for transportation O&M, such as the pavement management program? And then, the amount of existing debt service capacity that's available in the general fund to support the city's other capital needs. So, the first evaluating criteria, debt service costs relative to sales tax, this chart here, the models out the debt service amounts, those are the bars that run along the bottom of option one and option two. Option one is depicted in the dark green, and option two is depicted in the light green. So, you will see that option one is generating more debt service that would be tied to the sales tax than option two because we're putting more of the costs on the TBD sales tax. Then the lines up at the top, the yellow is the conservative forecasting scenario, and the green is the stress test forecasting scenario. And we're- And we're showing this here because we want to ensure that even under a stress test scenario, that we would have enough revenue to pay the debt service. Debt service is a fixed cost, and you want to be sure that you've got enough revenue to cover that. Otherwise, we would be having to look at other revenue sources, such as the general fund. And if we were in this type of scenario, the general fund would also likely be distressed. So we want to make sure that there is enough revenue, even in worst case or a stress test case scenario, to cover the debt service costs. The next criteria that we are offering for you to consider as you're evaluating the trade-offs between these options is then the amount of sales tax revenue that would be available under the TBD sales tax after paying debt service to be allocated to the pavement management program. Under option one, and both of these are based on the conservative sales tax forecast. Under option one, it's using more debt service to pay for the named projects. So there's less money available for ongoing O&M. Under this scenario, and this one's depicted on your left, there would be $24.8 million over the 20 years to allocate to transportation O&M, about 31% of the total revenues. This translates to roughly $1.2 million per year that could be allocated, assuming the revenue forecast holds. Under the scenario on the right, option two, again, less money is put on the debt service tied to the sales tax. So more money would be available, if the forecast holds, to support transportation O&M. Under this scenario, you would have about $37.5 million as opposed to $24.8 million to allocate to transportation operations and maintenance costs. And then the third evaluating criteria that we're offering up here tonight is how much existing debt service capacity under the two options would be available to the council. And under option one, because it's using less existing debt service capacity than option two, there's about 17, actually, let me back up. The city would be able to afford about $17.6 million of additional capital investments. And this could be in the area of parks, city facilities, things of that nature. So about $17 million would be available, and this is over 20 years. So once it's invested, that capacity no longer exists. Under option two, because option two is relying on more existing debt service capacity, there would be less available for other capital priorities, in this case, about $9.4 million. Again, trade-offs, and this is what we're hoping that you will weigh as you consider the pros and cons of each scenario. I should also point out that if we were to have a downturn and all of this money was not allocated, it could provide some flexibility in responding to some contracting revenues. Again, but that would only be if the money was not allocated to other capital projects. So getting close to wrapping up, just to highlight the trade-offs between option one and option two. Option one maximizes the amount of transportation projects that would be funded by the TBD sales tax. It preserves, relative to option two, the maximum amount of existing debt service capacity for other capital needs, preserves the flexibility potentially to respond to a downturn, but leaves less sales tax revenue that could be available to support transportation O&M projects. Option two, on the other hand, leaves less existing debt service capacity for other capital needs, limits the flexibility to respond to a downturn, but provides the city more funds to address ongoing transportation O&M costs. And the administration is recommending for the council to consider option one because, as we look through other capital priorities, see that providing some benefit to the city to have that flexibility. So with all of this in mind, the administration is recommending a couple of things as next steps. The first recommendation is for certainly the council to deliberate and offer feedback on what we've presented here, but to postpone making a final decision on the preferred funding option until after the council evaluates the 2020 to 2025 capital improvement plan, which we will be transmitting to the council on June 5th, scheduled for adoption July 15th. So that would be another data point for you to consider what the other capital needs are that are competing for city dollars. Whether the council decides to wait for that or wants to select a different timeline, we would then use that point that the council made the decision to develop a public engagement process to share with the community what the council intends to do, seek public input, and then use that to develop the final ballot language. So before going to the council discussion items, I thought I could pause and take questions that you have about what I've just presented, and then we can go through the discussion items.
Well, no one's jumping, oh, Councilmember Ray.
I had to jump in. So Beth, thanks. That was great. That was a whole ton of very dense information, and it's the second time I've heard, and it's still very dense. So you talk about the excess capacity from the TBD sales tax could be repurposed for O&M. And that makes sense, I get that. But it could also be repurposed for subsequent debt for transportation-related capital projects. So it's not an either-or. We can, we could, five years from now, say, oh, we've got some excess capacity, we're going to channel that into some additional transportation initiatives.
Correct.
So I guess the limiting thing, as I understand it, is it just has to be related to transportation, either capital or operations and maintenance.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Councilmember Hunt.
When you gave the Shoreline example, part of what's called out is that it was 60% for named projects. If I understand correctly, what's the percentage here that would be for named projects?
Yes, so it depends on the option. Option one would leave 31% unnamed, 70% designated to projects. Option two would leave 47% unnamed, 53% designated for specific capital projects.
Is that because the total amount is different with option two?
The total amount, it's still $38.8 million for the total package, but under option two, you're relying on more of the general fund debt service capacity than on the sales tax as the revenue source to pay back the debt service. So you need less of the sales tax, leaving more of the sales tax available to allocate to other projects. I should also say about the Shoreline example, the 60% isn't necessarily a magic number. And if you looked at their deliberations over this that went on for quite a period of time, they were at one point at 70%. And so the point being that they were trying to build in a level of conservatism. They did not want, I don't know if you followed the news about Seattle's recent, it was a property tax levy, but for transportation projects, that they ended up not having enough money for, and they had to go back and say, remember all those things we promised you? Not going to be able to deliver on them. So they were, Shoreline was trying to be very cognizant, as I am recommending, that if we're going to make commitments to the community, that we do it in a way that we can deliver on those commitments.
Thanks.
And I believe Shoreline, also another detail, their named projects, I believe they only ended up naming about 11 projects. And there was some question of, you know, why only 11 projects? But it was that desire to build in, in the conservatism.
I'll ask a question. Can you go back one slide? On the recommendation to propose endorsing a funding option until the council reviews the 2020 to 2025 CIP, my question is around, if there has been talk at various times, and we're not getting to deliberation yet, but about Southeast 43rd Way, what, if anything, would this impact around, if someone was seized with a fervor to get going on Southeast 43rd as soon as they could, what would this recommended step, what impact would it have on that timetable?
We, well, there are two possible scenarios. The CIP would either show as a recommendation from the administration, of course, you know, council gets final stay, but one would be to show it as option one, the other would be to show it as option two. Based on where we are now, I think we would likely go with option one, but if we're hearing strong feedback from you tonight, we might revise how we're reflecting that in the CIP.
Okay. I guess I was looking for confirmation of something I thought I had heard from the administration, which was that waiting to make a decision would not impact when we would start on Southeast 43rd due to the fact that the Earth spins on its axis, and so we have seasons.
Sheldon Lin, Director of Engineering. To answer the question, the impact of waiting till you decide on the 2020 to 2025 CIP is not going to impact the timing of the Southeast 43rd project irrespective of which option is chosen. We would be going out to bid in late this year, when the bidding climate is more favorable for that project, if the council desired to do it and begin this year.
Okay. Thank you. That's what I thought I understood. Thanks.
Sorry, I misunderstood the question.
That's okay. Other questions? Council Deputy President Batiste.
Thank you for the presentation, Beth. I was interested to read about the Shoreline example. Are there other examples of measures that have gone out where they've pulled back and...
You know, didn't do, didn't look at a lot of other examples, just Shoreline's the most recent one. Seattle has a 1%, .1% increase, and I believe that's part of the package that they didn't have enough money to fund. So they were not conservative. And that would be, you know, sort of the opposite, you know, the opposite end of the example. I've not looked at what the other cities that have the sales tax did when they put theirs to ballot, but that's certainly something we could follow up on.
Thank you.
City Administrator Moon.
Thank you. Yes, one of our previous presentations, and we can pull this back up for you after the meeting, listed the number of communities that have pursued a TBD with a sales tax, and that is the preferred revenue source for a transportation benefit district. And there are tens and tens of cities in the state that have pursued that, and I think each of them have gone through this same sort of calculus about how to ensure enough conservatism to deliver on the ballot measure proposal.
But some of those examples have followed that Shoreline example where they have set aside a certain percentage.
Correct, or a hard target dollar number instead of a percentage. Yes.
Got it. Thanks.
Councilmember Ray.
So as we enter into the 2020-2025 CIP planning process, are we entering in with the assumption that the voters will approve the 0.2%, sales tax increase? Question mark.
We will be building the CIP, making an assumption that the sales tax exists and is available to us, but in doing that, that is an assumption until it is put to the voters and the voters approve it. We, you know, we can't count on that revenue, but, you know, the CIP, and looking out six years, you're making assumptions on various revenues, so this would be among those assumptions.
So I think you just answered my question, but it's, we're making our projections based on that revenue source being available, and there's still uncertainty whether or not that revenue source will be available.
Correct.
And so we need to build in some thinking around, okay, what do we do in the event that that doesn't happen? And I guess I'd like to see how that contingency planning would affect the two options, one and two, because I think it'll affect them both very differently. So just something to think about as we go into CIP.
City Administrator Moon.
Thank you. One note that I might make on that front is, as we build our CIP each year or every two years, we do make these same sort of assumptions around grant revenue or various types of revenue. And we, part of the exercise is just deliberately trying to identify what is in hand, what is possible, and then talking about that risk or the potential of not being able to deliver on that revenue source. So we're thinking about the sales tax increment in that same fashion. As you'll know, we have a lot of projects that are shown as largely unfunded, and that's either because they don't have a real funding source yet, or we are hoping that in the future, there will be a dedicated funding source. And so the trade-off here is we either show it as a potential recipient of these sales tax funds, or we show the project in that unfunded column. And we chose so far to show it as a possible recipient of the sales tax so that we can delineate, you know, the projects that would be perhaps candidates for the vote. In terms of scenario of what would we do if that sales tax doesn't pass, the simple answer to that is all those projects would move to the unfunded list. If you look at the amount of available debt service capacity, or if you look at what you might wish to allocate from fund balances, that's a small number. And so there aren't very many of these projects that we would be able to undertake without an additional revenue source.
Other questions? Councilmember Woodstock.
Thank you. Beth, thanks for the presentation, and I want to note also the tweaks that you made to the information since our last ad hoc committee, and especially one of those last charts where you put the other bar in there. Thank you very much. I'm going to ask you to go back to, and I don't have the slide numbers, so start, keep slowly, right there. The stress test, so the first year in this model, 2021, that's six months' worth of revenues.
Correct.
And then '22 is four years' worth of revenue, the stress test line.
Correct.
You have an increasing over year, over one, over two, from '22 to '23, we have amounts collected increasing. I thought this was based upon an actual 30% decline over two years.
So the first year, half of 2021, is the equivalent of 2008 in the chart earlier. And then 2022 is the equivalent of 2009, but for a full year. So it's kind of masking, it's kind...
The first dip's not there.
What?
The first full dip of 2020.
No, it is there, but it's masked by the fact that the first year is only six months. So if I showed it for a full month, you would see two dips.
Okay.
So it's masking it, and I can model it out for you and send it to you separately.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
The one challenge I have, I'm struggling with your modeling here, is that our worst-case scenario is better than our conservative scenario.
Yeah, and that's, so one of the changes we made is, first of all, we changed the name of it, we called it a stress test. And there is an arbitrary element of this. There's an arbitrary element to all of these forecasts.
Of course.
The arbitrary element of this is that we happened to end the forecasting period, so 2008 to 2018, that 11-year period, 2018 ended very strong, I believe 15% higher than the previous years. If I came back, if we were doing this in 2016, say, and I was only modeling this out to 2016, that 1% would be applied on a lower base. So there is... is the fact that you're starting that flat trajectory at a high point is what is contributing, and it's higher than the conservative forecast, is what's contributing to the revenues being higher. If you move that up and down, you know, this is, this is purely for modeling purposes. So in that sense, the out-years is a bit, you know, and it's got frankly the same risk that the conservative forecast is, and what you hear economists all wringing their hands about of, are we heading towards the recession after, you know, the longest recovery since the Great Recession? We're 10 years in, people are waiting for that next downturn, and there was talk of it last fall, and things have gotten a little bit better, but now with the tariffs on, on, you know, Chinese goods, are we heading back there again? There's going to be another dip between, in, in that 20 years. You don't typically see 10-year expansion periods, and so, but it's, it's very difficult to forecast when that's going to occur.
All right. Thank you. Are, are we going to actually go through and address the questions that you laid out at the beginning?
Yeah. The intent is we're still just finishing with the sort of informational, and then I think that we're going to go back to the questions, and then the seven of us, we're not going to make a decision tonight, of course, but we're going to have some discussion about it, and then we're going to take public comment, and then the administration's going to go off and mull over what the seven of us have said here tonight. Councilmember Hunt.
The, the stress test example has, starts off with the sort of worst part of the stress test in terms of sales revenue. So could you just maybe very broadly explain what this would look like if that worst part of the stress test occurred in the middle somewhere? Because you don't know where it's happening.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, so if it occurred in the middle, you would see, and it depends where in the middle, but let's just say smack dab in the middle, you would see, and the previous 1% was accurate, and that's an assumption as well. But let's just say we were, you know, sort of here in the middle. You would see in the two years following that, those revenues drop by that 30%.
Would it still exceed the, the debt capacity, or...
I, eyeballing it, I think it would, but that is another, that's another way we could stress test that, and we could certainly come back and say, okay, what would happen if we shifted this out?
Okay, so it sounds like it would be close.
It would, it would still be close. And that's, and that's, that's, I think, the point that we're, we're trying to make is that I would not be comfortable recommending to the council to take on more fixed costs at this point because of how close it could be.
Thank you.
Other questions before we move on to topics, to questions to deliberate? Nope. I think we're ready to have those questions back up.
Okay, so I will just quickly read the questions to the council. The first being, does the council wish to propose the 0.2% sales tax increase as a revenue source for the unfunded transportation capital projects? The second question is, does the council support the administration's recommended next steps, including the recommendation to postpone making final decisions on the funding option until after the council considers the 2020 to 2025 CIP? And the final question is, does the council have initial thoughts related to how much existing debt service capacity to allocate to transportation projects, and how much sales tax revenue it wishes to make available for transportation O and M needs? That's probably actually two questions, but lumped into one.
Councilmember Walsh.
So there was an initial set of questions that was different from this, because that initial set of questions included things like, which projects do we wish to include, and ballot timing? So which one are we talking about?
So can I offer why, why it was presented that way? So those initial set of questions were, were the big picture questions we want to keep you to keep in mind as you're moving through the, the deliberations on this, not just tonight, but throughout the process. Tonight, we're recommending that you hold off on making those decisions about ballot timing and the final project mix until you see the CIP. So in some respects, question two replaces those earlier questions, but at some point, the council is going to have to answer those other questions as well.
So the reason I bring that up is because I think that it's very important to understand that if there's a certain number of projects that we could do with our debt capacity, and then the rest have to be either not taken on or funded with this idea of a .2% sales tax, then if we consider that initial set of projects, this might not even be as much of an issue? And that influences my opinion, like which projects fit into which category, affects my opinion of whether or not it is worth it to go after a sales tax. So I'm having a hard time coming at this without looking at the project list and kind of questioning, particularly, I'll just come out and say it, some of the projects on the current CIP are listed as deferrable, and yet are in this list of projects that we're considering.
Councilmember Hunt.
I think from my perspective, the first question is difficult to consider in isolation of everything else that we're talking about. So it's, it's just in terms of, do you propose a 2% increase standing by itself? I think it's, it's a difficult question to address, but within the context of discussing what, discussing the package of things that are in our packet and bigger picture questions, I'm generally supportive of going forward, but I, I agree with Councilmember Walsh that it's difficult to consider that question sort of in isolation of the project list and of timing and of what we're, option we're going forward. It's very difficult to just sort of separate out that one piece.
Council Deputy President Bateese.
So I would agree with Councilmember Walsh and Hunt, and I, just in terms of how it's, it's difficult to wrap, especially as the first question that we're considering, the, the sales tax, I really feel like, for me, I, I think I'd rather skip ahead to whether, whether we would like to take a look at the CIP as the first question, because for me, that just makes more sense. And I just, I would be supportive of being, having the opportunity to look at the CIP.
Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. Might look at it a little bit different? If your question is, how should we model revenue for the CIP, assuming that we do need additional revenue because we have unfunded transportation? And I think that's what you're at. We, we know that we have a backlog of transportation projects whose cost exceeds our current ability and based upon current cash flow and current revenue sources. That backlog costs way more than we can do with current revenue. To do, to chip away at it, chip seal away at it, we need to raise additional revenue. We'd like to model that by using a 2% sales tax increase so we can show you what a, what that would look like and with, what a TIP would look like, especially how it would affect the, the transportation. Plus, adding on, I think, the pavement management conversation that we had earlier tonight, I think it shows us what that could look like. So that's the way I'm looking at this, is I know we don't have enough to do what we, we think we need to do. Here's an option, this is what it looks like, can we model this? I would say yes, model that. But it's still an open question, and I'm not committing myself, but I want to see what those results look like.
Councilmember Goodman.
I agree with, with Paul. That's a little bit how I, more how I view it as well. We know we're short on revenue. The longer we wait, the further we get behind. This is not a new problem. I think my only reservation in answering, answering the question, it says, does the council wish to propose? And I think I would just insert the word, I'm just, I'm very interested, and I think we, it's, I think it's imperative that we model it with, I mean, we have to have new revenue. We're not, we're not going to get anywhere by just continuing to kick the can down the road and try to find, you know, grants here and there. It's just, this has been talked about for 20 years. I'm interested in what the projects are as we look at the 20 to 25 CIP. You know, we can, we can change that list if the, if the public indicates that they're not agreeing with the proposed projects, but I, I would answer yes to the first question.
Councilmember Ray.
So I think I'm going to just reiterate what everyone has said, which is, we have a lot of unfunded need, we need a new revenue source to address those needs, we think that those needs are sufficiently important that we would consider taking an increase in taxes to the public. Based on discussions I've had, the sales tax makes as much sense as other options, though given the article you sent us from the National Bureau of Economic Research, which basically says there is an economic impact of a, of a proposed sales tax increase, I think we have some work to do with our business community to really understand what they think of this and to really understand what the potential business impact or economic impact on our community would be of that level of sales tax increase. So I think we still have work to do before we say, yes, that's the way to go. That all comes as a caveat to the statement, we have unfunded needs, we need to do something about them, and this is a viable approach. So we just have work to do. On terms of the second item, because I'm just going to, you know, jump ahead, I think we need to wait until we finish going through the 2025, 20, 2020, 2025 CIP before really making a recommendation on options, because I think we need to look at the thing in, in total before we understand, or we talk about where to go forward. And then circling back to my earlier point, we'll just identify those things that we're assuming we can do based on existing capabilities, and those things that we think we can do based on a transportation benefit district funding source, and those things that we just don't see that we're going to get to.
And I'm going to get to Paul after, because I haven't, I haven't chimed in on the first, the first round yet. So I'm really actually somewhat torn on this first one, because as most of you know, I actually voted against the 2%, or authorizing the 2% sales tax. I consider it disgraceful that we have the most regressive tax rate west of the Mississippi River in Washington State, and sales taxes hit the most, the most vulnerable people the hardest. However, the part that makes me feel torn is that since that vote, the thing that, that I keep thinking about is the fact that, this, this fact that the majority of the traffic that we have in the city is passed through, and that sales taxes at least impact a larger catchment of individuals that is closer to the, the catchment of individuals that impact our traffic in the city. So I guess what I'm going to do is I'm going to continue, I think I, I think I mentioned this a couple of meetings ago, and I said this is kind of a disagree and commit, so I'm going to continue to respect the fact that the major, that I lost that vote two years ago. It was, it was, it was Bill and I, I think, versus everybody else. And so I'm going to disagree and commit, even though I really, I can't stand how regressive Washington State taxes are, and I will say again, I consider it a travesty. So since Chris talked about number two, I'll talk about number two. I'm just going to put out a spoiler alert. I'm going to vote for whatever gets Southeast 43rd Avenue done first.
Amen!
Well, okay, so as, as the, as the, as the chair of tonight's meeting, I'm supposed to tell you that you're not supposed to make audible comments, but I will tell folks at home, there was some comment from the audience on that one. So that's where I feel on that one, and so the fact that, it's why I asked the question. So waiting to see that 2020-2025 CIP will not impact when we would start, put shovels to concrete on this project, but I, but I will tell you, I'm going to vote to get that started. And before, I mean, the thing that impresses me off of the earlier chart that showed sequencing is that option two, although it has negatives, is the option that gets us going. This council has said that Southeast 43rd is a special kind of project, and it's different than the others, and I want us to legislate that way. Now, I'll move back on to Paul.
Thank you.
Councilmember Winterstein.
Oh, me, yeah. I think Chris raised a good point. As, I am the liaison with the, the chamber, last month's board meeting, I did bring up that we were having this conversation, and I think that we all kind of have an obligation to let our constituents, whatever audience that is, know that this is being discussed. And so, and I'm going to continue, we have another board meeting this, this Friday to remind them again, because I think what you said is very, is a good point. And I do, and I asked then, and I'm going to continue to ask for that. I should say as well, too, the, you know, I, my comments earlier about the .2%, what I didn't acknowledge is exactly what Tola said, and I, and I recognize that it is a sales tax increase. And, and yes, there's been actually quite a journey to get to the point that would even be, seem that that was palatable. And, and, and part of that is recognizing that, at the same time, that it is regressive and that it may, it affect, impacts people with lower household incomes more than those with greater income, but it does also bring in revenue from people that otherwise, not just that shop at our retail, but also build buildings or whatever type of construction, because that's a significant portion as well. And so we're getting those who are benefiting from and impacting, we hear earlier about trucks, you know, and the impact that they have on our roadways, especially during construction time. So the fact that, that this is a strategy to get revenues from those other sources, not just our city residents, is important. And I'm going to give you an update, too. Last time we talked about this, maybe back in March. So I've been continually monitoring my sales tax, and since through December, excuse me, May 12th, 2019, this year, my household has paid over two, almost exactly $250 in sales tax for purchases here in Issaquah. So it means that through May 12th, this .2% increase would have meant an additional $50 in that timeframe. So just to give you some real numbers, and I can tell you categorically what we spent those things on, and it's just one data point, but I'm trying to keep that in mind as well. What are the actual numbers as well, what we would, what we'd be talking about? Moving on to, to number two, so I have a slightly different take from Tola about 43rd, and it's that it has, is and has been number one on my list for a long time, and I think I was one of the early voices that said, show me an option how to do it with existing cash flow, we don't have to wait any longer. And thank you, you've provided that information. And I do want to wait through, as your recommendation here, until we get through, to the CIP, because some additional information has come along, I have a better idea about some of our other capital needs. And, and I think just because I don't have to make a decision tonight, there is some new information. I do want to see what that new capital plan looks like, and I'm hoping that maybe there is some more of the parks and the facilities information in there, so that when I do make a final decision upon option one or option two, soon we do that, I'm, I've got the advantage of all the latest information about what we see across, not just in transportation projects, but what we, what we see across the city we want to do. So, so, so it's that project in terms of where it stands hasn't changed in my mind, but I do want to take this additional time to, to consider the additional information coming forward in the next few months.
So I think we're into question, so we're solidly into question two at this point, and probably people can go on to three also if they want. Some, some folks haven't answered question two yet, if they want to. They don't have to. Councilmember Goodman?
Well, I, I agree with number two. I don't think my thoughts on Southeast 43rd have changed, and it's a priority project, but we'll be making final decisions later.
Other, Councilmember Ray, you look like you're moving your hand to the switch.
Well, I, I leaped into two early, I figure I'd just leap into three first, too. I think it's too early to talk about whether or not we want to make any excess funds available from a... from a Transportation Benefit District use for O and M needs. I think it's a viable thing to do, but I think there are other viable things we could also do with that funding in terms of additional capital projects. So I find that, that question a bit, a bit premature.
Council, councilmember Walsh.
So on number two, I'm very much supportive of seeing the CIP, particularly when evaluating it toward our strategic plan idea and seeing where everything buckets out. So I would be supportive of that. I agree with councilmember Ray that it's a bit too early on question number three, primarily because, again, I go back to that project list and say, how, how many of those go into the essential versus, oh, gosh, they might be deferable and thus, but I do appreciate that we are looking at this in a very conservative way that says, we still need that buffer room, and so that's an important consideration.
Other comments on one, two, or three? Council Deputy President Batis.
So I, just to, I didn't talk as much, I'm going to go all the way back up to number one. I, I just to reiterate what we talked about, I would definite, I, I think that this is really important. We definitely have unfunded capital projects, so I would very much like to see the modeling for that. Very supportive of number two. And for number three, I feel that we've got to get through that conversation and that it's a bit premature, and I, like other councilmembers, have talked about, still very focused on Southeast 43rd, but I'd like to get through that CIP conversation and understand the, the big picture here.
Other comment, questions, thoughts? Councilmember Winterson.
It's not up there. I'm getting back to your conservative, stress test, optimistic, and the conservative is really conservative. I'm, I'm just so tempted to ask for another option. Something in between that and optimistic.
2%?
Is that in between one and three? I've just been, been looking at the numbers, and I understand what you did. You explained it well, and I think, I mean, the question, thanks for being ready with the question that councilmember Hunt had about using the Shoreline example, where would we be? That, that's, that's pretty conservative, and I, and I do use that stress test model as quite exceptional. 30% in two year, you know, 15, 16% back-to-back years, followed by an 18% gain, some pretty wild swings. So, so I just, I think that, if you can answer one thing for me in response to that, fundamentally, because, because I think the open question, whether or not we use, we, we just say, let's fund the 43rd Street project, no new taxes, let's just do it, right? No new taxes. That's one question, but this 1% for, what, what do we actually model, what we use with is, addresses a lot of other questions. It's like what's left over as well? What other capacity for parks and/or facilities and what have you? What other, I mean, what material kind of difference would it make if we, if we looked at a different model? Where would that, where would that fall in?
So.
What contributions would it make?
So I'm going to just go back to this slide, and I need my notes, because my eyesight is not that good. If you went back to these, these three scenarios, the optimistic scenario would generate 98.7 million. And I think the important points to make, regardless of how optimistic or how conservative we are, what we're recommending to the council is that whatever amounts, if it ends up, if the optimistic scenario ends up panning out, if the super optimistic scenario ends up pass, coming to fruition, any amount over and above what is needed for the debt service, the council would have the flexibility to allocate to transportation O and M or other transportation capital projects. So if 1% is too conservative, and you would, you would have this opportunity on an annual basis, and you see the revenues are rolling in, you might decide, oh, we want to take on some other transportation capital projects. So in some respects, and I don't mean to be dismissive, but in some respects, the way we've set this up is that the forecast kind of sort of doesn't matter, because whatever, as long as we have, we're confident we have enough revenue to meet the debt service, whatever amount of revenue comes in over and above that, the council has the flexibility to allocate that out. If I can guarantee one thing, all these forecasts are wrong. That's just, that's just the reality of it. And so, but, but where, where I hope, you know, I'm, I'm guiding you and doing my job is that we've got enough to meet those obligations, but then giving you the flexibility, whether that's 1%, whether that's 3%, whether it's, you know, if you follow the stress test model, there might be one year you're up 15%. So that year, you might have more money to allocate to the pavement management program, but then if there's, you know, it's a slower year, you might have less. So it gives you that flexibility, the city the flexibility, the council the flexibility.
Yeah.
That said, we can model, we could do more modeling.
Yeah, no, thank you. That was a good answer, and I, and what I, my takeaway is, it doesn't matter what's in the model. If we want to be conservative in the initial years, this is how, you're recommended being conservative with the commitment we make in the early years. And let me tell you, if it comes in better than the model, then you'll have more options in the future. And if it doesn't quite come as good in the future, then you have fewer options in the future.
Correct.
And I, and I think that was your answer. No, by the way, all your models are wrong.
They are.
Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. So let me take that a little bit further and just step back. So councilmember Winterson is talking about the difference between the conservative and optimistic model, and I'm looking here back at that March number that said 2 million a year in sales tax and 26 million. So to me, the scary thing is looking back at that and going, well, that was also a model or some kind of guesstimate, and it's totally different from even the conservative. So can you talk through that maybe again?
Yes, so, yes, so we took a different tact with that. We took the tact with that of, first of all, we didn't have 2000, final 2018 revenue. So we were using 2017, and at the time that we were building that, we were also seeing some signs that were suggesting there might be weakness in our 2018 sales tax. It didn't materialize, but what we did is that we took the, let's, let's start with a lower amount of sales tax and build in the conservatism on the front end, and then we didn't grow it either. But we, we, rather than saying, okay, let's allocate 60% for example, as a way to build in the conservatism, we said, okay, what would happen if we ratcheted back the revenue? It's a different way of looking at things. This, I think, you know, I, this is, this is a more precise, although likely incorrect, this is a more precise way of looking at it. It's looking at it based on more recent data, and it's building in the conservatism on the number of commitments that we are making, and that's how, that's how we're adjusting for the volatility. We were taking it from a different approach in March, which is, let's just take into account that volatility on the revenue side. And, you know, we heard you, you asked us to refine it. We, by that point, had 2018 year-end data and had more time to dig into the data, and so that's, that I would say is, is the key difference. It's, it's where and how do you build in that conservatism?
Councilmember Hunt.
Could you go back to the questions that we're considering? So on the third question, I wanted to go back to that one. As far as the benefits of restricting the funding, so if we, if it were put on the ballot with this as the restriction, then we would be not able to fund additional projects with this? Or would it also be able to fund projects with the excess, any excess funding as well as operations maintenance?
Meaning, meaning, if the.
Meaning, so if we had the CIP and then we have a list of named projects, does, does this distinction on the last question actually allow us to fund some of those unnamed projects with any additional funding that we get from sales tax?
I, at this juncture in the CIP, I, I don't believe we will be recommending allocating any of those funds specifically. What we would be recommending is that, first of all, we get the sales tax passed, that, that the language give the council the flexibility to use any additional revenues beyond what's needed for debt service for either transportation O and M or additional transportation capital projects. And then we would be recommending that the council evaluate that each year with the, during the budget process, so that we had actual data under our belts, so that you could see how much additional revenue is available and what kind of flexibility that you have.
Okay, so I would, I would be interested in ensuring that we have that flexibility. And then I did have a request, which is that I don't think this presentation was in our materials, and it, everything is covered in much greater detail in the materials that we were provided, but I think that the presentation itself summarizes in a useful way, and so if that could be made available, that would be great.
Yes, we can make it available, and all of the charts in here were sprinkled throughout the, the memo.
Other questions from council, thoughts, before we go to public comment? Councilman Administration? All right, so we have a number of folks here this evening. We'd like, this is the point where we'd like to offer the opportunity to make public comment. I'm going to offer three minutes per person. If you want to let your relationship known to the, if you want to let be known your relationship to the city, you are certainly welcome to. What I would like to do is, if somebody says something and you agree with it, what we'd like to do is we ask people to hold their hand up as a sign, and I will make note of that, or if you have a placard perhaps, or anything you want to hold up to indicate your support of the speaker. That I will offer. Anyone who wishes to come from the public and speak to us this evening, to please take And make sure you do speak into the microphone so that the folks at home can, can hear you.
I'd like to let you know that Providence Point is well represented here tonight, and next week, I think you'll see more of us. Why? Because Providence Point has been waiting over 12 years for our traffic light, and three minutes doesn't really give me enough time to summarize all the problems that we've had. One of them is that we have a throughway, Southeast 43rd, two lanes going up to Samamish. We have a radar sign to control the 40 mile an hour, 30 mile, 35 mile an hour recommendation, and it's regularly 55 miles an hour going up two lanes. If we try to turn left out of Forest Village, across those two lanes, there've been a lot of accidents, they're on your police record. Your police record doesn't show injuries, because unless people go to the, use an ambulance to get their medical care taken care of, it's on your record as no injury. Our left turn lane is nine feet. We've had people parked there and hit by people coming down outside of them from Samamish. We live in a dangerous place that you have made it that for over 12 years. Your city council, when there was a vote to go from King County to either Samamish or Samamish, or, or, from, I'm sorry, from Samamish to Issaquah, the King Council, your council then alluded to the traffic light. That's why people voted to go from King County to Issaquah instead of Samamish. A lot of us regret that today. We have to tell you that frankly. Samamish has put up a lot of traffic lights, they control a lot of their roads much better. We have been let down. Sheldon, your predecessor, Bob Brock, has told me that he was against the bond, because he knew about the commitment to the community. He would be talking to you next week, except he's got health problems. I talked to him this morning. I've talked to a lot of people who've given me input, and I'm very dismayed that the can is going to be kicked down the road, because this last week, you published a new future plan, brand new. So the old plan from 12-plus years ago gets put on hold again. This is why there's only one way to go. Option two makes sense. You can afford it, and when we read in the report, Beth, that you and Sheldon put up before us, that you want flexibility to have more park land, when you just got Burks, Burks Ma, which is complicating your financial responsibilities, you've got a whole mountain full of green, and you want more parks and put our traffic light aside. I'm sorry, but we are very sad in Providence Point.
If you could summarize, sir.
I think I've said more than three minutes worth.
And there's a number of many, most, hands are up at those comments. Thank you very much. If someone else would like to speak? And I, and I will caution, please keep all your comments directed specifically to council this evening. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Daphne Gann from Providence Point. You know, over the years, I've often wondered why anybody would like to be on a small-town city council. You know, some people want to be on a city council, because they think it's going to improve their own financials. Some people, because they think they have really good ideas and they want to do it, and some people, because they just want to make their community nicer, better, respond to their citizens. You know, I have worked with some of you now, off and on, for four years, and I would say, I am impressed that most of you that I know want to make Issaquah better. So I, I really have enjoyed working with you and your, have, you know, my, my thanks for, for putting up with us people from Providence Point. One of the things I also wonder if you have done is, you know, all of these people, every single day, see the challenges in crossing 43rd. And, you know, it's our feeling, it's not when, but if there's going to be a serious accident. And I want to know, has the city council talked to your attorney about the risk that the city faces if there's a serious accident that you knew about? So that's, that's my question to you. And then my last question is not to city council, but it's to Emily Moon. You know, I went, Emily, and looked at your CIP plan about three weeks ago, and I'm old and I might get confused, but I swear they had the 43rd Street product, project as being deferable. So I'm going to call your nice assistant tomorrow and make sure I have it correct. Thank you. And, you know, keep up the good work, folks. Anybody who can spend an evening like this, sitting, listening to endless people talk about something they want, is, are to be commended.
Thank you for your comments. Would anyone else like to speak to us this evening? I think I see Mr. Kapler with his hand up.
David Kapler. David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. Question about the sales tax. If we eliminated all regional traffic, is there a street or intersection in Issaquah that would have a problem? And I would say it wouldn't. But if we eliminated regional traffic, what business would survive in Issaquah? Regional traffic, regional people, could need to be paying some of our sales tax to improve our, our roads, and therefore I'd definitely support that. Newport, we can save some money on Newport, as I think you've got some letters, west of 900, we need a short sidewalk from 900 to where a trail will, will begin at the south part of Burgsma, and we need a short sidewalk at the north end to connect the county trailhead to the community. Summer Hill, we do not need retaining walls and sidewalks across the front of Burgsma. Interesting was South Cove. I've most probably doorbilled in that community for, for, for literally decades, and it's, the road system is something else. The concrete, the blue stars that were on the map showing concrete problems is perfectly correct. You see places where drains come from homes and just dump on the sidewalk. It's got a lot of issues, and for years, you would, it was, the, the issue with front porches that were sunk and sidewalks going to those were all screwed up. It was amazing. There's something soil-wise there or something, or incompetence how that was constructed. Of course, it was done under King County, right, so we blame them. But there's, there's some real work to do in South, South, South Cove. The emphasis on the previous presentation on pavement management was great and very welcome. You know, we cannot defer too much maintenance without big consequences to just a few years. It really makes a difference, so, and do what we can there. Save some money on Burgsma. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else this evening who'd like to speak to the council? Anyone else? Second call. Third and final call. Would anyone else like to give public comment to council? Hearing none, public comment is closed. Does anyone on council have any final comments, questions before we go? I will say one thing. I had a question about what Cape Seal is, and thanks to the magic of the internet, I found out that it was developed in South Africa by the Cape of Good Hope Provincial Administration in the 1950s. So that's where Cape Seal comes from. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.